I've printed the agenda and put it in front of you. There's some small house cleaning type items. First one being the downtown road closure for Christmas event, Abby picket. The city's not doing the downtown Christmas event anymore, but some of the merchants in the downtown organization took that on. Did not close the streets off last year. And they said it was a little bit of a safety hazard, so she wanted to come and ask the council this time if they would consider doing that. I don't know exactly the times it will be in your pocket, because she did write a letter, but it'll probably be something like 10 to 4. So I'll be thinking about that, and she'll be at the meeting to explain more. Appointment, reappointment of beer board. Reappointment of airport board members. Talked to Carrie and I think Jeff Smith and Odell Ray both have agreed to serve again, so if everyone's okay with that. Jenny, do you know on the beer board which one is up?
No. I'm pleased with my last year.
I'll find out for you in just a little bit. First reading of ordinance 898, ordinance amending ordinance 808, updating the occupational safety and health program. That's something we just have to do every so often. OSHA and TOSHA come and visit us and they make recommendations. And the gentleman that came to see us last month was kind enough to sit down with Christie and make all the changes while he was here. So we're going to update that. Paving at the Winchester City Park walking trail, Daryl?
Well, ma'am, it's in the budget for $20,000. And we're under contract with Tinsley. I'm just really asking permission to use up to $20,000 to do some paving and hug your bit out, because we're under contract with them. I need to get your approval to do that. So there's some work I've got to do to get ready for it. Just want to get that on the table so I can get it done. It's on there, everybody will do it.
And it's in the budget already, so it's just going to be over the amount that I can approach.
I think we need to fix that hole, you know, on the road we were talking about.
We're going to fix that same time.
Yes, definitely. I sent David out, as I told you. There's an in-between the Swinflex and the Fire Hall up the hills, there's a pretty bad place that keeps sinking. They were going to patch it, but since Tinsley's already going to be in the park doing that, we're going to see if we can cut it out and do it correctly and get them to do it while they're there. And then Winchester Police Department surplus property.
That's on the guns. I mentioned to you earlier, we would trade on the guns. And I think surplus weapons, seized weapons that we have for us, that do trade with GT distributors and the whole thing, I think.
Will you have a list of the serial numbers?
Yes, ma'am, I have that too.
By the end of the week, so that way we'll know. And then, so as I mentioned, most of those were house cleaning, very minor items, but after I left y'all, whenever it was, I was told, because I had forgotten about, our health insurance needed to be on the agenda. So that was a pretty big item that we thought we probably did need to have a workshop so y'all could ask questions. And Chrissy just come in and she can just give you the basics and let y'all ask any questions that you want to ask. Everyone knows that our insurance went up 15.9%, and that was tremendous. And it's been doing that for the last couple of years, and that's making it really, really hard on the employees to be able to keep up to the point of some employees having to get off of it. So we were trying to look at alternative ways to keep the cost down where everyone could afford it.
So as Beth said, one suggestion was to maybe go to a self-funded plan. So I started having conversations with our broker, which is Chris Rose from B.R. Williams, gathering information about what it would take for the city to become self-funded and what all that means. I've worked with self-funded plans in the past and it's worked well and has been successful. A self-funded plan will allow the city to control the premium cost for our employees is one positive. It allows us to design our own plans so we can give employees options. What we are now is group funded. When you're fully insured, then you are at the mercy of whatever carrier you go with. So this year, as Beth said, Blue Cross came back with an over 15% increase, and there's absolutely, we have no saying that, there's no negotiating, we tried. You're at the mercy of the provider. Self-funded plan, what we're proposing is to have two plans for our employees to pick from. Say option one and option two. Option one is a $1,000 deductible plan. And option two is a $4,000 deductible plan, but has a $35 copay. With copay plans, either your premium's going to go way up or your deductible's going to have to go up in order for employees to afford it. But we have been requested with several employees to offer a copay plan. It fits better for some people. Maybe if you don't go to the doctor a lot and you just want to go and pay your $35 for your whatever, a cold once a year, then that works best for you. Others, it may not. So that was one reason we wanted to have an option. Some employees may choose the copay plan and some may choose the $1,000 deductible. Rates for the $1,000 deductible plan will increase, was it 2.5%? I think that's reasonable versus the 15% that Blue Cross proposed. And also, the $4,000 copay plan, premiums would remain the same. So there would not be an increase for employees if they chose that plan. We're also requesting a recommended wellness program. So in the past, the city has, we've had what's called a health reimbursement plan, where the deductible for our plan that we have now was $2,500. $2,000, I'm sorry, $2,000. The employee paid $750 and then the city would reimburse the $1,250. What we are proposing now is a wellness program. So every year, if you are enrolled in our plan, and that includes employee, any spouse or dependent, if you participate in a wellness program, which means that you just have to have, there's five things you have to do. Blood pressure check, cholesterol, diabetes, tobacco usage screening. If you do these things, then you will receive an incentive, up to $1,000, which would be reflected on your paycheck every pay period. We are working with a group to come in for a couple of days, and employees will have the option to come into the city hall or hear the annex and have those screenings done. And so if you participate, then you would receive the incentive. And then that would take the place of the $1,250 HRA, health reimbursement plan that the city currently does. The idea behind this is to start changing the culture that we have and developing a healthy workforce. That's what drives our premiums, our claims. So the city has staked the game now, our employees has staked the game now, and if we work together, we can keep premiums affordable versus going fully insured with the Blue Cross or with whoever. The self-insure plan is administered through Cigna. Employees receive a card, Cigna, Health Dental Vision. Cigna has a good list of providers. We have also reached out to other municipalities who are self-funded, and we have not received anything but positive feedback. Risk associated is that you have statistically one to two high volume claims every five years. So that may be this year, we hope not, it may be the fifth year. It's just something you don't know about. But hopefully, with developing a wellness program and having employees participate, that keeps your claim volume down also. So you catch issues on the front end instead of waiting until something happens, another pro, and that's what we're proposing.
And when she says you have a high claim, there is a stop-loss insurance that's a part of this. So at no time, there is a maximum exposure that the city would be open to. At no time would the city have to pay out an unbudgeted amount of funds. And so that's something that, that's part of having the other administration group in, is they provide a stop-loss. That was my first thing is that went off in my...
How much is that?
The stop-loss insurance, it's figured actually into the overall program, and it is an aggregate, anything that aggregates over $260,000 they pick up. I think the two numbers you probably just really want to know, and I'm kind of jumping in here just to, because I know what my questions were when they said something to me. I've talked to two other municipalities who have gone with this, and I said, okay, there's got to be a catch. There's a fee we don't know about, there's a filing that's going to cost us that we don't know about, something is out there. And they all said no. They said they actually were looking at changing the type of card they had, where they were looking at going to Cigna. They were with a different carrier, but as far as the insurance, the North America, the group that helps administer it, they would not change, or the self-funding, that they would not ever go back again unless something major changed. They had saved so much money and everyone was so pleased with it. This year, the city budgeted $461,000, right at $462,000 for insurance premiums. The employee portion of that would be 121 on top of that. That puts you at $643,000, nearly $644,000 that's been budgeted for insurance this year in the city on health alone. The proposed plan, the maximum exposure for the wellness plan and the other, the highest plan that they, the best plan that they offer would cost the city the most. If everybody took that, would be $640,000. And that includes the wellness plan, and like I said, if everybody went with $1,000, the more expensive plan, that's what it would cost the city. And yet, you have thousands and thousands of possible savings.
What she figured was the maximum exposure. If we had one of those five-year statistical claims, there's a $30,000 stop-loss.
It's $30,000 per person?
Per person. And the max that we would have to ever pay would be $260,000. But statistically, if you just have a couple a year, that's $60,000 versus however many hundreds of thousands. So you have a potential, you won't see it this year, but you will see it in the future. Tremendous amount of savings.
If we have a good claim year this year, the next year, if we save money, we can maybe make the other two plans more richer. You know, we could add benefits, we could keep premiums the same, we could increase the wellness incentive. I mean, that's the point. Right now, our premium goes into the same pot with Blue Cross as other groups. So at the end of the claim year, they look at all the claims together. They don't just look at Winchester's. And whatever the claim volumes are, they say, okay, this year we're going up X amount percent. And we have no control over that. I mean, we asked Blue Cross to give us a list of just our claims for the year so we could see what was happening. And first of all, they said no. They only did it for groups over 150. We kept kind of pushing and pushing a little, and we got a couple of numbers, but no detail like we will now have, we'll have this now, we'll have all this reporting at the end of the year to be able to make decisions on, so.
Because you snapped lung.
Ma'am?
Because you snapped lung.
That's right. You're controlling your own lung deal.
So on a catastrophic health issue, the most exposure that the city would have on that person is $250,000?
No, it's 30.
It's 30, okay.
That number, MC Gady, is if every participant had a $30,000 claim.
Is that 30,000, I mean, per year for that individual? And then the other, what you call it?
The aggregate, the stop-loss, the aggregate stop-loss is the 260 is, if you had several, several small claims, let's say everybody had a claim that year and they were smaller, eventually you might go over what you had budgeted, but that 260 is the aggregate. So once you hit 260, it doesn't matter if you have somebody else coming with a $5,000 claim, your stop-loss comes in and starts paying.
So that part, the stop-loss, except they're uncovered. The wellness program, to be a part of the wellness program, is that all you have to do is just come and be screened, or do you have to be screened and fall within certain parameters to qualify?
This year, we just want to start out with participation. So if you participate in the program, then you get the incentive. I mean, this is a big change for everybody. But they want to go ahead and throw this out there. We're having a tobacco screening this year. So nothing happens if you're a tobacco user this year. But next year, it may. You may have an increase in premium if you use tobacco. That is very common.
Usually there is.
Yes. So that's giving everybody a chance to make changes. So you're not springing something on someone at the last minute. I don't, let me do my best. So this year, just participation. You come do these things, you receive incentive.
Now, the premium, total premium that you talked about, $640,000, is that money that's set aside to cover this program, right? And who is administering that, those funds? Is that Cigna or?
No, there's actually, we set aside the funds, and then there's North American.
NAA, North America administrator, they're a third party. They administer our plan for us. They're in-between us and Cigna. You're basically renting Cigna's network. North America processes the claims for us. I mean, if we haven't had them a fee, there's no way we can do that ourselves. So to answer that question.
And of course, for them to administer it, they're going to have, there's a fee for them doing that, I'm sure.
That's part of the...
And that's factored into this. So where are those funds held?
In our local bank account.
Okay. And I'm assuming that would be in a separate...
Yes, we would be needing to move that to a separate fund.
So let's say next year, we didn't use all of that, all of those funds, and there's $100,000 left. I think I heard you say a while ago, if that were happened to be left, then we maybe for the next year could offer something different for the employees. Or is it an option to just let that balance build?
It is.
Okay. So you've got someone that's administering it and we're renting the, what do you call it?
Network.
The network, then is Chris still going to be our local contact? So we're still kind of funneling through Chris, through Cigna to NAA?
Well, it's me and Chris and NAA and Cigna is how it works.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I also did some research on brokers and the need and why, because maybe some folks might have questions. You have to have a broker to be in touch with a third-party group. You have to have a broker to work with a network. That's a requirement for most third parties and for most group insurances such as Blue Cross and Cigna. They don't deal directly with the client.
That's just the way it is.
So if you do this, then, and participate, Martha Carey, you said that you had talked to other municipalities that participate. It sounds like that there's not a downside to it in talking to the other municipalities. Did they give you a feel for how their year went as far as the premiums they collected compared to what they had to pay out? I mean, was it all, did it seem like that it was always they were paying out pretty much everything they took in? Or did it appear then that they were taking in more than they were paying out?
Most of the time, they did not pay out what they had anticipated. They, you know, they say, all of, everybody from the administrators through to the municipalities say, you have to give it a good five or six years to see, because you will have a bad year at some point. But three, you know, three to four of those, out of those five years, they've paid, you know, a substantially amount less out, so.
And compared to the program that we might be offering compared to what we've had in the past, is there any drastic change in coverage?
This is a better, this is a better, average, a better plan than what we're currently...
And the premiums that the employee would be paying would be less than what if we stayed with where we're at and we had this 17% or something increase in premiums? Now, you mentioned 2.5% a while ago, what was that number?
The 2.5% is the suggested increase. The $1,000 deductible plan is just a little bit of a richer plan. And so to help offset some of that increase, that would be a 2.5% increase from what the current rate, what this past year's current rate has been. And then the $4,000 deductible plan with the copay would stay the same, at the same rate.
So if they chose the $4,000, they would enjoy the same premium that they had? Or if they went with the $1,000?
$1,000 deductible.
Then they would be looking at a 2.5% increase.
But they also, that is a richer plan, but they can participate in the wellness program and recoup their deductible completely.
That's what...
So basically, it would be zero deductible if they go through the wellness program.
For instance, for myself, if I went through, did the wellness, was a participant, did the wellness plan, I would actually just put that money out of my paycheck, I would put that amount in a savings account. So if I had to go to the doctor, I'd just pull that out, and that would cover the deductible.
So you think that if the increase next year is going to be a smaller amount, or are you going to absorb that increase with your balance that you're accumulating?
I think all that would be something we would come back and look at when we get to next year and see how it went. Okay, do we have funds left over? And if we do, where do we want to go with those? You know, and probably, you know, I would say you probably want to do some, might want to do some of both. You might want to not increase the premiums as much, and you might want to set a balance aside, you know? So if you had a bad year, you had that balance there that you could help offset the premium when you saw a large increase, because that's what it's all going to be based off of, is our group.
And once they choose either option one or option two, can they change their mind and go to the other plan? Or are they stuck on that one plan?
For a year, you would be stuck there.
Yeah, and those rules are governed by the ACA. You can't change anything unless you have a qualifying event, and that's a marriage or divorce. Some, you know, significant change, you have to wait to open around it before you can make changes.
The health plan, the, what am I trying to say?
Wellness plan.
Wellness plan. People that are participating in the wellness plan that may have, that smoke, or may have high blood pressure, or their cholesterol may be high, whatever the case, are there any programs within that program that the employee can, that will help the employee to reduce blood pressure or to make progress in stopping the smoke? Or does e-cigarettes count? It does? Okay. So maybe we can get people to stop the e-cigarettes as well? Or reduce their cholesterol or blood pressure or whatever? So there'd be programs that, now, once they sign up for this wellness program, and if there are other programs within that to help them improve their health, are they required to participate in those?
No.
They're not?
You don't have to, but if next year, we come down the line and say, okay, there's going to be an increase for tobacco, and I don't want to pick on tobacco.
I know, yeah.
Because there's other things too.
Yeah.
There's a body mass index. Some groups charge extra if your body mass is at a certain percentage. So it's not just tobacco usage. But that's always the first one everybody brings up, so we'll use that one. Right now, if you want to stop smoking or using tobacco, we are already required to offer a cessation program to help you do that. That's a law, by the way, under the ACA. There's a list of items that if you are going to be a provider or a health insurance, that you have to offer your employees, and we do that. It's called wellness visit every year is paid for, 100%. We're going to take advantage of that as part of our wellness program and say, look, we'll pay for this, we have to anyway. But if you do these things, we're going to give you some money back towards your deductible. And if you won't help, we'll help you. I mean, those services are, a lot of them are already offered, people just don't know about it. So that's a, that's a big part of it for me, is awareness, is bringing some of the things up to the table to help people, give them the tools they need to make decisions. And in return, that helps us control premiums.
Well, to me, it only makes sense that if you participate in the wellness program and you get that $1,250, is that what?
It's $1,000 per employee and $500, I didn't mention this, for dependents or spouse on those.
So if you get the benefit of that, it would only make sense at some point that you have to do more than just sign up for it and have the screening. You're going to have to start making some concessions on your own, or it would never be of any benefit if everybody just kept doing what they were doing and just signed up for it. So at some point, it would have to...
By default, maybe you don't know you have a high blood pressure. So you come to the wellness screening and now you know you do. Well, I would hope that most people would follow up with their doctor and get treatment. If you do that, then you're fine. Now, and I'm just using this as a maybe, but maybe if this year you were diagnosed with high blood pressure and you did nothing, next year you come back, you go through the wellness program, and you're still diagnosed with blood pressure and you still have done nothing, then maybe we need to talk about that. You know, we have 50 people on the plan that has high blood pressure, well, you just, you know, what can we do to help that? There's a lot of, like I said, awareness, just bringing it up to, bringing it to the surface, and I think it'll help some folks who normally wouldn't maybe do things. I think we all may be a little bit of that. I think we all may be a little bit of that.
And in the future, we may add some type of exercise program or walking program. I mean, there's lots of things that we can add to it.
Some groups say if you walk X amount of miles, then you get, that's part of the incentive.
Now, obviously, we're doing this for two reasons. For the employees, to help the employees. But we're also, it'll also be a savings to the city as well.
Over several years, it'd be a tremendous.
So any idea what, I know that's probably hard to project, but any idea what it would, what it might be over five years or 10 years?
It could easily be over a half million dollars, easy.
Have you all looked into the state plan, how this compares with it?
Yes, yes. That was one of the first things I did was I got quotes from the state and they're all higher than what we are currently paying. I received some feedback. I had other folks ask me, look in the state plan. This city's with the state, this city's with the state. Well, I called some cities close by and they are with the state. But they pay premiums for their employees, 100%. So of course, as an employee of another city that says, I'm on the state plan and it's great and wonderful, it's because they're not paying a premium. So I'll just leave that there. They don't pay for family at all. And the family rates are off the roof. And they don't have a lot of participation for family coverage also. I found that out. But we went directly to the state and got quotes. And they just, they're not competitive. We'd stay with Blue Cross instead of doing that. And once you.
It is Blue Cross.
Right. But we wouldn't go through the state to get to Blue Cross if you have to pay a higher premium than just going to Blue Cross. And once you enroll in state plans, you're kind of in there for a couple of years. You can't just come in and out, so.
If this would be approved by the council, how, when would it be effective? When would it take effect?
October 1st, which means I have got to have meetings next week. So I'll be getting with all the department heads today to set those up with employees. I think we're looking at the 14th and the 15th. We'll do it over two days. We'll have packets ready. We'll go over all the premiums. We'll answer questions. We'll get everybody enrolled and everybody will be ready to go October 1st. One big question I'll go ahead and address in case it's asked is, what about my deductible? Because deductible plans are from January to January. That stays the same. If you've met your deductible, it does, you're still good until January. It doesn't start over until then. We got a report, so we know who's, where they're at. And we'll just send that on over to Cigna and they'll know. Nothing will change. You won't lose any of that benefit.
And that's how, my understanding, that's how the wellness program will run as well. So that the incentive that, when it comes on your check, it would start in January and you would get paid through December on it. So that would flow where we were with the HRA, how we had done the HRA because the HRA was part of the deductible. We're in January to December. The wellness would run from January to December as well.
And if we start the program in October, the employees would have till November 30th to do their wellness program. And that way, that would give us time to get everything set up in January for the additional maintenance.
I'd let them know it's a great preventive start to making changes.
I've seen, I've seen good things happen with the plan. It is, you never know. There's things that happen outside of our control. But I would much rather pay for a claim, a high claim for one of our own than to have to pass down a premium increase from an employee that belongs to another group. You know, that just makes sense to me.
We've talked about a wellness program for, even before we started finding out what our premium increase was going to be with Blue Cross, Blue Shield. But it didn't seem like it was going to benefit us to start a wellness program because we could reduce our claims, but it wouldn't necessarily reduce our premium because they were pooling us with other Blue Cross, Blue Shield groups. So do you have any other questions?
And does that include the dental vision as well?
It does.
That's great.
And those rates stay the same.
And currently, and it will stay the same as far as employees that have dental paid that themselves. But what this will do is keep it from increasing for them. Well, if you don't have any other questions, I mean, that is the, basically the presentation. And it was easier to give it in this format where you could ask many more questions. We can do a short version at the council meetings to let the public know what we're talking about doing. But it won't be here as long as this. And I know we can't vote till next week, but I want to make sure that everyone's, you know, if you have any reservations, if you could come and meet with us and let us work through that. Because it's really important that Kristy gets started on this process for us to be able to meet that October deadline. So she's actually going to go ahead and set up those meetings probably for after the council meeting. But we're going to go ahead and start setting them up and making the packets.
It sounds great.
It's a little bit of a change for the employees, but when they realize that they can benefit and actually can participate in the wellness program and potentially lower their deductible or not have a deductible at all. And they can get some cash for participating.
Okay. An employee that has an existing health condition, are they, two questions, and you can answer them. Are they currently rated on their premium because of their health condition? Okay. Or will they, will that affect their upcoming premium because of a pre-existing condition?
Pre-existing laws, by the way, there are no pre-existing conditions if I'm answering the question. I mean, you have to provide coverage based on pre-existing conditions. You can't single anyone out.
But because it's pre-existing, doesn't cause them to have to pay a higher premium? Okay, okay.
But do they cover it, say, for a cancer survivor?
Active.
Now, if you were, if you chose to not participate in the program, I mean, they could make you wait till an open enrollment, which you would have to wait if you chose not to do it now. But if everyone agrees to go on it beginning, the federal law will cover all that. And everyone pays the same premium. Kristy's done a whole lot of work on this. MC and I have been the, kind of the devil's advocate, trying to shoot hoes in it and, you know, just to make sure, because we were all, she's dealt with this before. We had not. So we wanted to double and triple check all the numbers. I think we went through that process.
That's why it's taken so long. Usually our open enrollments in August.
August 1st.
But we weren't going to rush it, you know. We had to make sure that all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed. I've been a part of the plan, but I, you know, I had a group of people that had been part of it too, working together. So this was kind of new on some level for all of us. But I would gather information, take it to them, and they would say, no. And then I'd go back and then we did that for the last few months.
It's too good to be true if I do something wrong.
Do you all have any other questions? We'll see you all next Tuesday. And Ginny, if you'll wait around just a minute, I'll find out on that billboard who's up.